We call the meeting to order of the UPA. Today is Tuesday, November 23, 2004, 5:30 PM. I ask that you please announce and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three on tonight's agenda is an opportunity for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on items not appearing on tonight's agenda may do so during this time. Those who would like to speak, please present your name and address. Yes?
I just want to know if you're going to have people from the public board nominate people to be on the board, or how are you going to do that, to be the fifth person?
At this point, Ray, we're waiting until after the first of the year, when there's new board members that will be seated, and then among those board members, they'll take some nominations from the community, and we will announce that through the media in various forms. But I don't see that happening until after the first of January, when there's at least one new board member up here. Any other public comments? Okay, we'll move on to item number four, our consent calendar. We had item A minutes of the regular scheduled board meeting of October 26, 2004, and financials for periods ending November 19, 2004. Entertain a motion?
Tell me. Second.
Have a motion made by Director Ragio and second by Director Lago Macino to approve the consent calendar as presented. Any further comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries 4-0. Item number five, we have our June 2004 audited financial statement for the UPA. This evening, we have Mr. Clay Maddox here, and all of you received the audit in our board packets, and at this time, I'd like to have Mr. Maddox go over the financials for us briefly.
Thank you.
And we'll entertain questions from there.
Okay. Just briefly, the major difference you will see between this audit and any prior audit you've seen is that we have now implemented what's called GASB 34. GASB 34, if you note in the beginning of your audit, takes Roman numeral pages three through nine, and is trying to make the financial statements more readable to a non-financial person. Okay? Whether it does that, only time will tell. And I say that because we've had teachers who were on the original board who decided what GASB 34 was going to look like, who don't think it's working at this point. But you will be able to tell me over time. The other significant difference is the last four or five pages are statistical information on this district as to water flow, electrical flow, power, and all the rest of it. That, over time, will be more useful, because you'll have more years to compare, and the other is, is obviously with the loss of the flume, for a period of time, comparison is difficult. But nonetheless, it's an attempt to make these more readable to the non-accounting person. As to your financial position, if you would turn to page two, numerical two, versus Roman numeral, okay? It is the balance sheet. Go way back in, it's probably six or seven, well, nine or 10 pages in, because if you're looking at page two, that's Roman numerals, it's just a bunch of verbiage. All right. On that, you will notice that your current assets have changed, have increased dramatically. The nice thing about that is you actually had a year that was mostly of operation, good operation, right? Because the flume was repaired just prior to this year commencing, and you actually got through a whole year, which is a good thing. Okay? Now, I bring that up, because if you look at the current assets, about the fourth line down where it says a little over $1 million versus last year's $600,000, and then you go to page three, and you look down at the bottom, and you look at your net income, you can see where that money came from. Whereas the prior year, you actually showed a loss. And obviously, that was because the flume was down, and you weren't able to do what this district does. I think for your purposes, you need to take the, on page three again, the second section from the top, which is administrative expenses. Think you need to look through those and see if there are material differences that you would want to pursue any further, and then take that compared to page 14, which is the actual expenses compared to budget. And the board probably needs to say something nice to the administration about the fact that the admini-- don't look at me that way. All of a sudden, what, I've got to say something nice?
Sorry.
About the fact that the administration budget came in, the actual came in quite a bit under budget.
Good job, guys.
I mean, we all take abuse for things, so I'm trying to point out something that's Now, having gone over it in quick summary, oh, the other I'd like you to look at is pages 10 and 11, which are notes to the financial statements. Page 10 is my attempt to try to explain the note to CCWD. I'm hoping by the next time we get to an audit, we'll figure out what that really is.
Well, one of them's gone.
Okay.
The first million's gone. You paid that off.
You paid that off. And that was just the payment, there was not accumulated interest or anything else? That was--
Well, we're debating that.
Okay. That was a debate when I was doing my fieldwork. The other is, in probably note seven on page 11, I will delete next year if nothing has happened. That has to do with charges that were made a couple of years ago, and obviously is all tied up in state lawsuits and everything else. We kept the note in here, because it obviously happened within this audit period, but it seems less and less likely that you're going to, that money is going to materialize, at least at the levels that we thought. So that's why it's still listed as a contingent, because we don't know.
So you would drop it off next year?
Well, unless I had something that was more concrete, meaning that one of these agencies said, yes, we know we owe you something, I would probably modify it, because I think the amounts, at least in talking to Mr. Tribble and your administration, administrative staff, there's a great question as to whether the amounts are reasonable, right? The amounts are based on what you billed it at at the time, but we've seen so many other agencies around the country have to reduce their billings.
Okay.
Well, at least try to get closer to realistic.
Supposedly, some of that money has, that NCPA is holding some of that money right now regarding the lawsuit. I mean, so I would really like to see us keep it, but that's--
Well, but maybe we can get closer to what we think the realistic amount is, rather than what it was billed at. So I certainly would not do it without having what I felt was concrete, or at least more concrete than I have right now, which is a little difficult. Now, having gone over it in that summary, are there questions? Is there something, as you were laying there at night with insomnia and reading it, that jumped off the page at you?
Well, I think one of the things, and we noted it at our last meeting, is the interest question with CCWD.
Right.
And as far as I know, there's still no response back about what that may or may not be, and what position we want to take later. You know, acceptance of the letter we sent, calling it good, or do we continue to correspond with one another on what it may be? But that would be reflected, too, in this next budget year or next audit year?
The next audit, hopefully that's been settled.
Okay.
Would be my hope. Now, as I offer at any point in time, or each year anyway, about the second page in in this report is, no, I take that back. It's page one, numerical one, is my audit report. It has my name and phone number at the top. If you ever want to call me directly, please feel free. Hopefully, being local, that helps. If you want to sit in my office, I'll go through anything that I can with you. Be more than happy to discuss it.
And how was it working with staff?
Oh, like pulling, no, it was wonderful. Realize that--
The paperwork is in good order.
The paperwork was in fine order. She was able to find everything that I asked for. Realize that because you have a CPA doing the financial statements, then as he presents that to me, it's well documented, and I came down and asked for half a dozen things to look at here in the office, and we found them. I think there was one item that you got to me later. I mean, it was very well done. It's not a problem at all. Okay?
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Maddox on the audit report? Any public comments?
Do you want a motion?
Entertain a motion to accept the audit report as presented?
Move, we accept the audit report as presented.
Thank you. For a second. Have a motion made by Director O'Nito and second by Director Ragio to accept the June 2004 audit report as presented. Any further comments or questions? All those in favor? Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries 4-0. Thank you. Item number six, staff reports. Item A, we have operations and maintenance reports. This is page 10 of our board packets and the generation report. Vern, I'll refer to you.
I think we'll start off with operation maintenance. Over the last month, we've had considerable amount of vandalism on the system. The last being, which was kind of alarming on the 11th, we noticed that a corner post, a three-quarter flume was dislodged from the footing. And when we first looked at it, we thought somebody took a sledgehammer and actually removed it. We investigated it the following days to repair it. It was obvious that there was an explosion there. So we reported that to the Sheriff's Department, and since it's a FERC project, the FBI got involved, and it was an explosion. Somebody had tied an explosive device to the corner post of the flume and ignited it. Fortunately, it wasn't low enough to actually sever the flume in that area. So we don't have all the reports back, but it's been, FERC doesn't view it as vandalism, because it is a federal project. And so I don't know what the outcome, because I haven't got all the reports back from the different agencies that were involved, but they did a very extensive study on footprints and ATV tire marks. I mean, they just tore this thing apart. And it actually dislodged some rocks that came down and actually hit the flume when the explosion occurred.
When was that done, Vern?
Well, it was done around the 11th of the month. And we went and looked at it. Originally, the operator thought that somebody had just taken a sledgehammer and knocked the corner post down. And then a couple days later, we went up to repair it, because it's right on the railing. We didn't want anybody to fall off the flume looking over the edge. And it was pretty obvious that the board dip was dislodging, the concrete fractured, that there was an explosion there. And then we got the investigation going forward. And it gets better. Then during the operation, the last few days, we noticed that the water disappeared in the upper section for a short period of time. Our monitor picked it up that there was a decrease in water flow going into the forebit. And one of the operators just happened to be there at the time and looked at it. Yeah, it went down to minimal flow. Then all of a sudden, it returned. So that kind of brought up a question, how did that occur? Did we have a tree in the canal or whatever? We went and investigated and found that somebody removed the chain from the dump gates and actually opened the dump gate and then reclosed it. So then we got concerned. It goes on. So then today, one of the operators walked in the flume and found that somebody had taken the bolts off the transition of the concrete to the wooden flume on one of the flumes on both sides, and removed the transition braces, bolts. And this wasn't done by accident. These bolts, the warshers and the bolts were removed from the inlet and the discharge side of that flume, which left that flume. If we'd had a big heavy storm, it could have dislodged it, and we'd lost all the section. So we've got some problems. What we've done, we're kind of minimal staff, we're walking this thing on a daily basis now, and even considering working at night and walking it at night, because it's that critical. Because obviously, some of these are right here. I don't know what the purpose is or what, but it's nothing that we've seen in the past. So we have concerns, FERC has concerns, and the Sheriff's Department says we've had, you know, three reports within the last three weeks. This is a major concern.
Does this appear as though somebody knows what they're doing?
Well, whoever took the gate off had a key and opened the gate. The thing was unlocked when we got there, and it's never unlocked by the operator. It's always locked on return. And I don't know if they were just testing it to see how it worked or whatever, just fortunately, our data loggers picked it up, and we noticed it with a telemetry system, so we investigated it. Now, if they were to go up there and open it at night, until we received the alarm, we would not know of that. But the concern is, you know, we have air valves on the system, and tomorrow, we're going to go through all those and make sure that they're actually operating. If they dissipate our water, and we lose water, and the air valves don't work, we can collapse our bin stock. So we got, we're doing the best we can with the crew we've got, but we brought everybody in to do a walk on the thing, and we probably end up doing it at night, too. But in between the leaves and all the winter and the trees and the canal, which we're still fighting that, too. It's been fairly hectic the last few weeks for the operators. Any questions on any of that?
So this was first noted around the 11th of November.
Right.
Any questions of Vern?
The possibility of security people at night, new hires to take care of it, would it be beneficial?
You know, I've got a temporary employee now that actually--
Temporary?
--signed to just doing that.
Just watching at night?
Just watching. Well, we're just going to start, after today, we realize that the bolts have been removed, we're not even sure if more flumes are done. I mean, this is a large system. We can't, you know, cover it all the time. We tried to break it up into sections over a week's period, and walk the upper section and a portion of the lower section, but now, we're just going to walk it from here. We actually take a camera, look at each flume, go under the understructure. When we had the explosion at three-quarter, we actually walked underneath the whole understructure at three-quarters to make sure that something else wasn't attached to it or did some other damage. And we didn't find anything, but, you know, we're just going to have to look at the system real close.
Hiring employees?
Don't have a clue. You know, until I get the investigation report from all the different agencies that were involved, because there was quite a few of them, I'm just kind of guessing, just conversation with the sheriffs and stuff, they knew it was an explosive device. They estimated it was probably dynamite with a cap, and there was four-wheel tracks from ATVs, because the gates were locked. The gates were always locked, so they came in over the top of the mountain gate, access to three-quarters. So, you know, unfortunately, it isn't then. And so that is, we're trying to be inconsistent with our walks, just so we don't set up a pattern. But even that, there's only seven of us, we can only do so much.
Is the FBI involved in all three of the instances?
I'm sure, because it's a federal project. Once they're notified, in fact, Tanya talked to FERC, and they were not happy campers. They're very upset about it. And we took documentation, wrote a report, even though we hadn't got the police report yet, we explained that to them. We did send them, you know, photos, and we got photos of what we found today on the dislodged bolts, and we'll pass that on to them tomorrow morning.
Yeah, the procedures I'm following with FERC is I sent an initial report, which is our internal report with photos. I will follow up with them once the sheriff report comes in with supplementals, and then I will also have to follow up with the repair report. And that's basically the guidelines they told me I had to follow at this point. And no, they're not happy. I'm surprised they're not out here yet.
I think by tomorrow.
We're going to see them.
So do they have their own investigative--
I'm not sure. You know, I know there were people from Sacramento, Modesto, Stockton, all involved in once they realized it was an explosion. Fortunately, it was set high enough on the flume that it didn't take out the whole footing, it just fractured the top section. If it would have been maybe three or four foot lower, it could have actually severed that section.
This must tie in with that Homeland Security stuff they--
Yes.
--with explosions and water and all of that.
Right. Yeah, FERC was very concerned for that aspect, exactly. They consider it not vandalism in any sense.
We shouldn't run short-handed. If you need that extra help, might be--
Yeah, I actually, I'm here tomorrow, I'm going to go ahead and walk the lower section, and we'll make a termination. I think we're going to do nights, especially during the holidays. You know, even though we do have good monitoring systems, and the operators are aware, a lot of things can happen there.
How much would it cost to get a private outage in here to help you walk that flume?
Well, that might be something we end up doing. You know, right now, we're just kind of trying to evaluate, see if we have any more areas, right? You know, we know of these three areas, it's been tampered with. We're just going to have to look at each flume individually, take an evaluation, and if we have other problems. It might be warranted to bring in a security system.
Do we have a, any concerns about the safety of our people running around out there?
I'm concerned about night.
Right. I mean, one probably shouldn't be out there.
No, it'd probably be two in groups.
Okay.
Please?
Yeah, I think we have discussed, from the city point of view, what the emergency preparedness plan is, and that is something that we, this is kind of jumping us forward, I think. Frankly, I would recommend, or I feel that this is something that the state government should be responding with appropriate protective action, which could include things like national patrol scrutiny or even National Guard support, because it is a huge system to try to monitor. But I think, when you think about the number of lives that are at risk, and the danger of confronting one of these, well, whatever they are, that's something that shouldn't be taken lightly at all. I would counsel very rapid escalation and demand that this system be protected.
What's the Sheriff's Department approach to this? Are they considered the lead agency, or FBI, or?
Well, you know, I think FERC is going to be the lead agency when it all comes down to it, because of being a federal project, so, you know, I'll probably know more tomorrow. You know, by the time we got all the information today and actually got the photos of the dislodged bolts, and talked to, you know, part of the operator, and found actually what occurred, because it was just, we knew somebody opened up some water somewhere. But it could have been a log that got in there and blocked the canal for sure, for your time. That was our FERC thought. And then once we investigated it, we realized that someone had actually done something to the system, so, but--
And is there notification to other agencies that we work with, like Fish and Game and things along, are those agencies noted?
Not under a vandalism thing, because this is something, you know, little things happen throughout the year. You know, they want to think, they take our walk boards and then screw them, and take them off to wherever they end up, I don't know. And those are, you know, 14-foot boards, two-by-twelves, and we put them down, and they disappear, you know? And it's out in the middle of nowhere, so you're wondering how they're getting these things out of here. And, but that happens fairly regularly, you know?
Well, I can see a board off or something, water going out like that, but when they start blowing up the piers, we got a problem.
No, we've got a major problem.
Taking nuts and bolts off, they don't--
Well, the nuts and bolts have signed up a settle, because actually, that wouldn't do any damage until we get a good rainstorm, and we have a large quantity of water, and it actually could sever the section, and you could lose the whole flume right there. And that's a major concern. You know, that was just something we noticed today, this afternoon, so, you know, we're not giving up. We'll stay right with it, and maybe we'll do some calls and see what, you know, help there is available through the state, if that's possible.
Yeah, I think, you know, my somewhat experience is you have to rattle a lot of cages and keep climbing the ladder till it gets to someone who can make some, you know, allocate resources to it. I think, too, you know, from what you need as a staff, you know, and I echo what Randy and Paula have said in regards to, you know, bringing on additional staffing, I, at nighttime, and I even think daytime with things like this, that people should be in pairs and operating under those kinds of situations.
Absolutely.
All right, we'll pursue that tomorrow.
Yeah, you know, we can't have our people confronting these people, you know? You can observe, and they can call in, and we aren't cops, and we don't want people blocking explosions, but I think perpetrating a big mistake with using explosives in the first place is one of the worst things to commit a felony with, is explosives, which is so easy to trace. Right now, Homeland Security, they're going to dive on this, like, just for practice. This is, this is timing issue. The perpetrators, it's crazy, poor judgment on their part. But I'd let the federal, well, if you're going to work, if you're going to call anybody, call your federal reps, keep the heat on them, but the feds, the feds are in the best position to do something about this.
Yeah, I agree. I think when they get the report tomorrow morning, we'll follow through with it, see what assistance they have.
Can you, I'm scheduled to be out of town until next Tuesday, so perhaps join his vice chair, keeping him informed, so if there needs to be some sort of emergency meeting called on the board to allocate resources or whatever to be able to do so.
No, I, you know, the way it looks right now, we're going to have to get more individuals on patrol in different areas.
Have you alerted other agencies of our situation here, like CCWD, NCPA, and the city, and UPUD?
No, we haven't.
I would maybe suggest that. I think the more people that are on the alert and look out and know what's going on, I think we need to get the word out, at least to our kind of sister neighbors and such. You know, more eyes and ears that can be attuned to this kind of thing, the better. Any other thoughts or questions, Scotty? I see Curly, and then Lee, Curly?
Sorry, go ahead, Q. I was just trying to--
Maybe it's the same thought, but certainly, the city needs to assess any preventing maintenance or any other schedule that would, you know, might draw down the water for normal, the wet time of year. So I guess, I certainly think we want to communicate with the city that they need to know about this, and that they should, Carol should make an evaluation of decisions that might otherwise not-- I'm just thinking, if you were to be doing preventing maintenance, you might actually reduce the reservoir for some purpose or other than that. Probably wouldn't be a good idea right now.
During the winter months, we actually do reduce the capacity of the reservoirs to collect the additional runoff, so we'll let some of them back up right now.
Okay. Well, I'll have Tim contact UPA office tomorrow, so he can get informed of this and be aware of it, and do what we need to do. Anything else?
Generation report, actually, we're down with an outage during the month of October, the last couple weeks. We still managed to generate a good amount of float, even with that, and revenue-wise, diverting water to NCPA turned out very beneficial for us for the month, so we came out in good As far as the outage went, I think the last time, we had a board meeting right during the outage, and I mentioned a couple of the problems we had. Obviously, we solved them, because we're back up running. Some of the things, we didn't get the gun eye done, because the weather kind of threw the dampener and that on us. But we did get Murphy's Governor repaired, and it works very well, better than it ever has. As far as response time, we did get all the seals replaced that we were missing and looking for at the beginning of the month. We got the transformer, it's in pretty good shape. We went completely, did that, found some loose connections in the transformer, which might have accounted for the high-energy arc that we were seeing over the oil sample for the last four years. We replaced the bar controller at Angels here with an automatic system, which the operators are in love with, because instead of having to fly down-- Instead of having to fly down here in 45 minutes response and adjust the bars, they can do it with a computer. Well, basically, it tracks itself and keeps it within 20, so that's working out real well. And it's all out of the outage. We accomplished quite a bit in a short period of time.
With all that rainfall?
With all that rainfall. We had pumps going and dams, and it was pretty active the first three days, but we got what we accomplished. We got flume 17, the understructure all replaced and most of the flume replaced, and so it's in good shape.
The gunite repair, will you try that for later this year or just...
Well, what we're thinking right now is, you know, the biggest problem we have with that is getting 6% less moisture and sand, and that's hard to do in the winter, because everybody stores their sand outside. And in order to dry it, put it in the truck and keep it contained is a big cost factor. So I think somewhere around June, you know, even though I think it'd only take about three days to do the repair area, we actually did fix the leak that was in that area. We knew where it was. Instead of gunite, we just went in and patched the leak, and that solved the leak problem. But we still need to go back to that area and gunite the rest of the section, probably in June. We'll go down for like, usually every June or first part of July, we go down to clean by and the needles, get ready for the summer run and clean out the system, go over everything. So that'll be the time we'll probably pursue the gunite.
Good job. I know it was very stressful during that time period, and you managed to survive. A few more gray hairs, though, I've noticed. All right. Any other questions, Vern, on the operations report? My outage maintenance report? Okay, thank you, Vern. Move on to item B, the administrative report. Tanya?
Yes. Item one for me is NCPA, October... It says October, really December. Dates for board and commissioner meeting. I wanted to address the board about... We had set a time of 12:00 or noon for December 1st to meet in Roseville. I would like to change that start time to 11:30. I was wondering how that would suit the four of you.
Perfect.
Okay.
Right?
I'm not being a grandfather, that's it.
That's right. If you have a special occasion, let me take you away.
I also gave to you directions to the Roseville office for NCPA. This is just basically to update you, we're set and we're ready, we're ready to go. So 11:30 on...
Here to meet here at 9:00 and carpooling versus bus?
I thought we were gonna bus.
Yeah, 9:00.
We got the bus, nine thirty?
Nine o'clock.
For the first 17 people that sign up. After that, we'll have to take our car. So we'll meet here at 9:00.
Yeah, it takes... According to the MapQuest, which I need to give credit to Dawn Dane for emailing me, it looks like it takes 1 hour and 53 minutes to get there, so...
Who's driving the bus?
Yeah. Debbie.
I think Terry Parker. He'll entertain us. And I see here that we're on the agenda for 11:30, and they'd like to know approximately how many people will be there. So you've told them about 130?
No, at this time, we started with eight, from us.
Okay. Well, I know, I've asked the city council members to join us, and Judy is putting a note in the boxes, and I'll have them call you directly to RSVP.
That would be wonderful, and I'll get ahold of Judy as well.
And then I don't know who else from UPUD might be joining us.
Ray, are you interested?
Sure am. Put us both down, Todd.
Great.
You have me on your list, right?
Oh, yeah.
All right, so in fairness, we need to have a head count by... Let's see, am I reading this right? When would they like to know? I would imagine soon.
Soon, we're about a week away, so maybe right after. How about Monday, the 29th?
And then, as I understand it here, there'll be a barbecue?
He said... That's what he says. They'll likely do, for lunch, a barbecue-style lunch.
Be very nice.
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
What time would you want to box lunch, do you know?
For noon to 2:00, it looks like. So if it takes us, say, two hours to get home, I would think by 4:00.
Okay, I'll go, Todd.
Okay.
I got 9:00.
All right, yeah.
Can I just pass a piece of information?
Yes.
We were trying for our way from the office today to here. I noticed that the... Because of the major street called Douglas Boulevard is under repair, so it took us about 15, 20 minutes more, don't you say that long? So you may want to hop on that.
Okay.
It's just jam-packed everywhere, no matter which way you want to go.
Okay.
There's a major thoroughfare is construction going on.
What road was that?
Douglas Boulevard. Sunrise Boulevard? Is that construction on Sunrise?
No, it's on Douglas. Sunrise and Douglas, the temporary bridge kind of collapsed.
Oh.
On a poorly road.
All right. Ouch. We've got 8:30?
Okay.
8:30. 8:30.
Be here at 8:30.
Don't you be tired? Plenty of time. So 8:30 in the UPA parking lot, the first 17 at RSVP will have a bus available, and anyone after that can drive their own car or carpool with those who are meeting here.
Don't really expect there's going to be seven more than 17, does it?
I don't know. You never know.
Well, something, we better get the information out that they need to let us know, so we can tell the city.
Okay, Tanya, I'll work on it.
Great, and I will, too.
Work on that for you. Okay. Item number two, our CPPA resolution request.
Yes, CPPA contacted Randy, who is our representative. Thank you, Randy. And guess what? They're having some insurance, problems procuring insurance. And they need to change their JPA so that they can procure insurance outside of California. And they need a resolution from member agencies stating that it's okay to do this.
I shall move.
Second. I have a motion made by Director Alito and second by Director LaCincino to approve the resolution. It's an amendment to the Calaveras County, or excuse me, Calaveras Public Power Agencies' Joint Powers Agreement to allow procurement of entrance outside of California. Are there any further comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Don't we need a roll call for a resolution?
I'll be more than happy to do that. Roll call, vote.
Yes.
Director Alito. Director LaCincino. Director Radillo. Director Ponti, yes. Paulson, Carey, Sporo. Thank you. Okay, item number three, schedule of rates below the Murphy's Powerhouse. It's the item 15 in your package. And Tanya's been doing a little research and has some questions and concerns, and we suggested that this be brought to the board and be for consideration here, or it may have to go back to committee's force and further review.
Yes.
Tanya, I'll let you take a turn.
On the schedule of rates below the Murphy's Powerhouse, there is some information on here that I don't understand due to history or not being here historically. And it says, "Future water deliveries may be reserved per the following reservation fees. The reservation fees are due and payable in full by July 1st of each year. Failure to make timely payment of the reservation fee shall terminate the contract." And then it has a percentage breakdown. "And each year of reservation shall count towards a year on the 10-year contract term." So I should note that this is for 10-year contracts as well. Sally did me a great service and went back through all the minutes. She was able to find a Water Committee report to the UPA Board from March of 1997. That doesn't... It tries... It was explaining irrigation contracts, but it still isn't clear to me what this reservation for water was. If we were to ever need to do this, I don't understand procedures or even how to make up procedures for something like this. So I was wondering if you could help me in this area.
And we have not... This was done, but no one has ever been billed for this.
That's correct.
It's my recommendation, let's send this back to committee and review. Some of these numbers that jump out at me here, that scare me death. So I'd like to go back and ask committee and we'll sit down and think about it.
Sounds good to me.
Dwayne, are you open?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, so we'll refer this or defer, refer this to personnel and finance. And Chris, do you recall this information? It might be helpful if you were at this meeting.
I don't think that I was at this meeting, but I can't really remember. But I... The way this came up recently is one of our 10-year contract holders called and said, you know, where's the information about, you know, the cost and, you know, the scheduled rates and the 5% escalation per year, 25% over the life of the 10-year contract? So we started looking into that, and then we found the schedule of rates that I think originally went out with each contract.
And it did. It happened that it was missed in this particular person's contract, and they called for it. And so I decided to read it again and looked down and went, I don't understand this. So here I am.
The part that's not clear about it is, what are the reservation fees? And what is 20% first year of contract? 20% of what? That's what we're... We're puzzled what that was intended to be.
Well, some of my questions as well, which can go back into committee, would be if they were to reserve, for example, 2004 is paid, and they wanted to reserve water for 2005 for whatever reason, is there a reason why they need to do this? And that 20% that they pay, does that... Is that payment in full for 2005? Is it a reservation fee? So it's a fee, and that's what we charge them for reserving water for them? We... There's no... In all the minutes that we pulled out, there's nothing that's telling me these guidelines to help me...
So policy wasn't developed?
That's right.
And this only pertains to the 10-year contracts?
That's correct.
I always remember, we always talked about, you have to give notice by July 1st that you intend to take for the following year, and that rolls the whole 10-year period. But this reservation fee part of it is the mystery cookie in there.
You get it back to committee. We'll iron out some of those for you, I think. It was my understanding that it was kind of set up like the Williamson Act, you know, one year and you sign up and it just keeps renewing that for...
For 10 more years.
That's right. But we'll go back to committee. There's a lot of questions here that I could ask.
Yes, there are, because I've been thinking about it, and there's been lots of questions that have popped up.
You're right, in that it's a rolling effect.
Sure. We thought it was.
Yeah, and that's clarified. I think that's stated here, but I, you know, when Tanya's discussing with me, there is... Well, it's just not clear on the 20% and what it actually holds, and if that's payment in full and that sort of thing.
Exactly.
All the years I worked for this, I never worked this 20 or any of this percent.
Well, the key here is if somebody came to me and wanted to reserve water.
And not do it.
I would not know, is it a reservation fee or is it payment in full for that reservation year? Number one.
It needs to be cleared out.
Yeah, well, and there's nothing in these minutes to clear that up, let alone why would reservation of water be necessary? I mean, there's just all these...
Under 10-year contract, it shouldn't be necessary.
Well, yeah, you're right, Randy.
One thing says something against the other.
So we'll talk about it committee.
Committee has its work cut out for themselves next year.
We'd like to start the year right with personnel and finance, don't we?
He's lame ducks. We're all day.
Well, we can't do anything in the next 30 days, I know that. Okay, anything else, Tanya?
No, thank you.
All right. Any questions of Tanya? Okay, we'll move to item C, council report. Chris?
Just a few items. I'm still waiting on a draft easement agreement from Chris Seville's attorney. We agreed in principle on the terms of it. I'm just waiting to see the document. And Vern and I talked about it, and it should be suitable for our purposes. On the CCWD, the issue of whether or not there's any accrued interest payable, I talked to Ken Arora today. He said he didn't know anything new. So I did talk to... I left a message with Rudy Hernandez and said, what's new at CCWD? Our view is that the view expressed in Ken Arora's letter. And we would like to confirm that that's your view, and please let me know. And I didn't hear back from him today, but maybe I'll hear from him tomorrow. But that's something that needs to be cleared up. It can't just float out there, and I think that was what, one of the things Clay Maddox was saying, it needs to be resolved. The other thing which you know about is I did send a draft, just some draft language for consideration in connection with a new voting structure. I was unclear on a few things, as you could tell, and so I got them for you and Dwayne to kind of look at it and check your memory on it.
Right, and I'll be meeting with Richard Matranga next week, our city attorney, going over those things, so...
Have I seen that? I haven't seen that.
You know, the voting structure thing I sent by email and to get to Dwayne and to Debbie on the new composition?
Might do it. I have that, and I don't know it. I mean, if you...
Dwayne, you know what? I'll just have to talk to you later.
All right. You have one.
It's very possible in my life that it has, that you have given it to me and it is no longer...
You may not have gotten it, and I'm sorry about that.
That very could, very well could be. I can make you a copy, Dwayne.
I can, too.
So, okay.
But that's, those are the only items.
Okay. What I'd like to do, Chris, is once I sit down with Richard and go over my notes with him, is have him contact you, and that way it can have all the legalese to it all.
I think that UPUD has basically looked at this agreement. Oh, we didn't see it. Never mind.
Yeah, we were waiting for it.
We talked about it.
We talked about it.
Okay, anything else, Chris?
No.
Any questions for Chris? Okay, we're moved to item seven, old business, discussion of possible action. We have our Lucille Bank loan information, refinancing options, and I know this evening we have Mr. Doty here and Mr. Ashwandon. And Dwayne, I'm going to turn this over to you. You know the latest information on this and...
Basically, our Robert's recommendation was not to accept the loan from Pacific State. We discussed that at the board and with that recommendation, and Ron asked that he be allowed to address the board one time because he felt there were certain things that he would like to make clear to us. So Ron, I'm gonna turn it over to you if... And if everybody, it's Ron Ashwandon, the what, general manager, the...
Just local, y'all. I have a set of documents here that were the latest revisions from Mr. Doty, and I know you guys have a full agenda, so I won't take much time on these. I just wanted you to be aware of where the bank stood on this, so that we're all clear on what we've got. First thing, the loan was structured at 5.5% for 10 years, which saves the authority about $70,000. There's no real property being taken on a deed of trust. There was a UCC1 security agreement on chattel, which is basically receivables. We removed the demand feature from the note, which normally, when we loan to a borrower, it says on demand. If no demand is made, then on. That was removed and specifically omitted for Mr. Doty's request. And by the way, while I have a lot of respect for Mr. And by the way, while I have a lot of respect for Mr. Doty, and this is not pick on Mr. Doty, this is just my, showing our side of the issue and indicating to, to the board that I don't necessarily agree with everything that's been done so far. We agreed to take no insurance on the flumes because it was restrictive in terms of cost. We loaned the City of Angels money with these, with these documents, with these types of documents, without nearly the emissions that are being asked for. The package in front of you, there's two basic documents that are at issue. The first is the loan agreement, and the last one is the association's resolution, or the, in other words, the, and association is a bad word because that's been struck in the document, so we'll use joint powers. If you notice, the business loan agreement, the word business is struck, we conduct, uh, we conduct this loan for business purpose regardless of whether the borrower is a business or a joint powers agency, which is strictly stated as in the borrower's line item in other upper left-hand corner. Anything to do with dollar amounts and dates are agreed to be changed by the bank. Obviously, the loan is not needed for a million three fifty, it's something less than that. Robert and I talked about it, might be as low as one point one. We're not disputing any of that issue. The words that are struck on the first page, for example, I just want to give you a couple of examples. It says, "The borrower has received prior commercial loans from the lender or has applied to the lender for a commercial loan, or loans, or other financial accommodations." If you notice that, that he strikes has received prior loans, well, obviously, you haven't received prior, prior loans. But this just gets to the, some of the semantics that are being brought up, which don't make any sense to me as a lender, because we've never had these issues come up with, with any other borrower, and certainly we, we belong to associations, we belong to nonprofits, we belong to every type of agency you can think of, and yet it seems to be an issue in this particular case. The legal effect down on the lower part of the first page says, "Agreement constitutes an instrument of agreement, borrowers are prior to given this agreement when delivered all will constitute legal, valid, binding obligation." If you admit that, omit that from, from this document and/or the note, it basically removes the bank's ability to say, well, we realize that the CPA just provided a financial statement, obviously, there's been huge losses, so that, it's not that we're going to have a default agreement. One of the major things Mr. Doty keeps saying is this default provision, in other words, make these changes or we don't have a deal. And I think we ought to look at a bigger picture as long as it's acceptable to the board and their legal counsel, of course. And I'm assuming Chris had looked at these. Top of the second page, it says, "Other than LaSalle Bank," well, obviously, we're addressing those LaSalle bank loan, so, uh, that's one other issue. There are one other thing that needed to be in there. As far as ten versus twelve years, we set the loan up for twelve, for ten years. The bank fully agrees that if, if you needed twelve years, that, you know, we could negotiate that at some point.